Good evening, everyone. We're here at the City of Daly City Fiscal Year 2018 Midyear Budget Review. We have staff to present. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, the Finance Director and I are going to be providing you with our mid-year budget review to give you a sense of where we are today and where we estimate that we will end the year on June 30th. Much of the information that you are going to hear tonight has been used in developing the fiscal year 2019-20 budget that we are in the midst of preparing for you. And I say in the midst because the numbers, we're still working on them and we have provided you with a budget schedule for the review of the proposed budget going forward in April. So between now and then, we're still working on numbers based on what you're going to hear tonight. We're going to provide you with the overview and we hope that this will be an opportunity for you to ask whatever questions. But if we could get through the presentation first and then get to the questions, we've, I think we've allowed enough time before the council meeting to be able to provide responses to all of your questions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to to Mr. Chu to start the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today I'm presenting the fiscal year 2018 mid-year budget update. The agenda include an overview of the general fund budget projection, general fund revenue, general fund expenditure projection, and general fund reserve. Now, we look at the general fund budget overview. This table summarize the general fund revenue and expenditure projection for the current fiscal year. I'll provide you with more detailed information in the next two slides. The first column is the fiscal year 2018 adopt budget with a deficit of 2.8 million. When the council approved the budget in June 2016, general fund reserve of 2.6 million were used to bridge the funding gap. The second column highlight improve is the projection based on the first six month revenue and expenditure. General fund revenue are projected at 82.4 million, which is slightly above the project expenditure of 81.8 million, resulting in a positive fund balance of $600,000. The net result of $600,000 does not include the general fund structural deficit. I'll provide more information to the council later. Now, we look at the general fund revenue. This table summarize the performance of the general fund revenue by comparing project revenue against the budget revenue. The first column is the fiscal year 2018 adopt budget. The second column highlight improve is the revenue projection for the current fiscal year. The last two columns are the total amount and percentage change from the budget. For fiscal year 2018, total general fund revenue are projected at 82.4 million. After deducted 2 million one-time revenue in excess EREF, the general fund net revenue growth are projected at 80.4 million. Project net revenue growth is 5.5 million. This is mainly due to improved performance in the property test, traffic funds, building permit, planning and engineering fee. However, the growth is offset by the loss in utility user test revenue of around $300,000. Now, we focusing on the property test. Property test is projected at 32.5 million, an increase of 2.3 million above the budget due to strong wholesale in the Bay Area and higher access value from the county accessory office. Sales test is projected on target. The UUT, utility user test decreased by around $300,000. This is mainly due to a decrease in the UUT non-distant revenue and consumer disconnect non-iphone service. Other tests increased by around $600,000. This is due to project increase in business license revenue. License and permit such as building permit, electric code, plumbing and plant fee increased by around $300,000 due to increase in construction and remodeling activities in Daly City. Funds and forfeiture, the number six, funds and forfeiture increased by around $400,000. This is mainly due to increase in parking fines. Charges and fee, number nine, charges and fee increased by around $500,000. It is related to the planning, engineering, and zoning fees in the city. Now, we look at the miscellaneous revenue item number 11. Miscellaneous revenue increased by 3.5 million. This amount include 2 million one-time revenue in excess EREF. Now, I'll provide the council with more information on the excess EREF revenue later. And $400,000 increase in workers' comp self-insurance reimbursement. So when you look at the total general fund revenue 82.4 million, after we deducted 2 million one-time revenue in excess EREF, the net revenue growth is 80.4 million. This represent a 7.3% increase from the adopt budget. This chart shows the general fund revenue by category. Project general fund revenue for the current fiscal year is 82.4 million. This pie chart shows the city budget heavy reliance on property test, sales test, and UUT. The three major revenue bringing more than 50 million or 61% of the total general fund revenue. It is important to note that sales test is highly sensitive to economic downturn. Any change in local economy will have a huge impact on the general fund revenues. Now, we look at the property test revenue between 2007 and 2018. The green bar on the far right is the estimate for the current fiscal year. Since the last recession in 2008, property test has grown at an average of around 4% annually. Project property test for the current fiscal year is 32.5 million. The next line is the sales test. This line shows the performance of the sales test revenue between 2007 and 2018. The green bar on the far right is the projection for the current fiscal year. This chart illustrates sales test is highly sensitive to the economic downturn and consumer confidence. As you can see, sales test revenue decreased by more than 15% in 2010 due to collapse of housing market and high unemployment. Project sales test for a current fiscal year is 12 million or 1% growth over the prior fiscal year. Now, we look at the utility user test, UUT. UUT revenue dropped an average of around 1% each year since 2008. Project UUT revenue for the current fiscal year is 6.1 million, which is 11% below the peak level in 2008. The change reflect consumer disconnect non-iphone service. Now, we look at the excess EREF revenue. The excess EREF is based on the state minimum funding requirement to the school. Each year, city and county get back some of the property test revenue that is used by the state to fund local schools. In recent years, the state has increased funding to school resulting in a higher draw from the county EREF statewide. In California, only San Mateo, Marin County, and Napa County are the only three county in the state with excess EREF revenue due to high property value in these three county. Given the future of excess EREF is uncertain, revenue from excess EREF is categorized as one-time revenue which should not be used to fund ongoing operating expense. Any excess EREF above the budget will be used to repairish the general fund reserve. The table below shows the excess EREF revenue between fiscal year 2007 and 2018. The project EREF revenue for fiscal year 2018 is at 3.5 million due to high property test in the Bay Area. Now, we look at the general fund expenditure. This table shows the performance of the general fund expenditure by comparing project expenditure at the year end against the budget expenditure. The first column is the current fiscal year budget. The second column highlight improve, the second column highlight in green is the year-end projection. The next two columns are the total amount and percentage change from the budget. Total general fund expenditure are projected at 81.8 million or 4.1 million above the budget. This is mainly due to 3.7 million higher than anticipated salary and benefit adjustment. Service and surprise increased slightly by around $400,000. This pie chart shows the general fund project expenditure by category. Total general fund expenditure are projected at 81.8 million. Over 75% of the general fund expenditure or 62 million are used to pay for employee salary, benefits, and retirement. The remaining 25% of the general fund expenditure are for operating expense such as service and surprise, fixed charges, and capital outlay. Now, we look at the pension obligation bond debt service payment. In 2004, the city issued 36.2 million of pension obligation bonds. And the maturity date is June 2024. Proceed from the saves of the P O B were sent to CalPERS to repay pension and fund liabilities. Total outstanding principal and interest for the next six fiscal year between 2019 and 2024 are 25.1 million. The next table shows the escalating debt service payment of the pension obligation bond. As you can see, the debt service payment increased 4% annually from 3.7 million in fiscal year 2018 to 4.6 million in 2024. The escalating debt service payment of 4% outpaced the general fund revenue growth of around 3% per year.
That's a really important number to remember as we go through this because while the projection for where we'll be on June 30th looks positive, it's all taken up by what we have in outstanding obligations for the pension bond and as you're going to see in just a few more slides, are increased in PERs retirement rates. So essentially, every new dollar of revenue is already spoken for in terms of paying down those obligations. Go ahead, Lawrence.
And even more?
And more, yes, absolutely.
This chart illustrate the historical CalPERS employer contribution rate between fiscal year 1991 and the projection for the next 10 years up to fiscal year 2028. The red line above represent the employer contribution rate for public safety. The blue line below represent employer contribution rate for miscellaneous. Because of the investment loss during the recession in 2008, CalPERS increased the employer contribution rate beginning in 2013. The chart shows a steep increase in the PERs rate between 2013 and 2016. Then in 2014, CalPERS approved the demographic assumption changes which further increased the employer contribution rate beginning in 2017.
That's crazy.
In 2016, CalPERS lowered the discount rate from 7.5% to 7% beginning in fiscal year 2018. The discount rate change will facing over a period of three fiscal year. In 2018, the discount rate will lower from 7.5% to 7.375%. In 2019, it will further lower to 7.25%. Then in 2020, the discount rate will lower to 7%. As you can see, between 2019 and 2028 here, CalPERS rate for safety, the red line above, increased by 58% from 39% in fiscal year 2019 to 62% in fiscal year 2028, which is significantly higher than the general fund average revenue growth of around 3% per year. CalPERS rate for miscellaneous will increase from 30% in fiscal year 2019 to 45% in 2028. Because of the rate increase, PERs cost our project should be an increased share of the city budget going forward. I'd like to check with the council, do you have any question on this chart?
Yeah. So in that, to the left there, when they talk about they lowered the discount rate, I don't know quite what that, those words mean.
Discount rate is equal to the investment return. Now, for example, if the investment return changed from 7.5% to 7%, so it means you have negative net return from the investment to cover the operating expense and for the PERs payment.
That we have to pay more?
So that means city have to pay more to make up the difference?
To make up the difference, gotcha. So the lower the discount rate, the worse off we are?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yes, and the lower the discount rate, the more realistic it is about what our returns are actually going to be. And many have argued in looking at the CalPERS rate debacle that we've been dealing with and that we are projected to deal with going forward, many have argued that the discount rate should have been lowered a long time ago because we would not have relied on what we believe to be the returns on our investments with PERs and believe that that was going to cover more of our rate obligation. Because PERs investment returns haven't been anywhere near these levels. And we, and so it's that gap that we are required, along with all the other cities and that are CalPERS members, to make up the difference.
So CalPERS was kind of going on a best-case scenario if everything in the world was perfect, and it was not, and is not, and continues to be not.
Well, it has not been at least, for at least the time period since the recession, since 2008.
So I'm wondering what their actual return is. Isn't it around four?
It just varies from year to year.
So there's no guarantee that even these high amounts will remain the same. It could go even higher.
If they further change the actual assumption, it will go further higher.
That means if we live longer.
Yes.
Correct. Well, and that has a huge impact on what our obligation is because we're, with employees living longer, we're paying longer. And we now, like many cities, but we face the fact that we have far more retirees than we do active members, which means we don't have people that are paying in right now as active members to offset the costs that we have for our retiree expenses. And we don't project that we're ever going to have a number going forward that's going to provide for actives covering a larger portion of the liability that we have.
And in February 2018, CalPERS vote to shorten the amortization period from a 30 years to a 20 years. So that means instead of a 30-year mortgage, it changed to a 20-year mortgage. So this, the reason they're doing that is they want to increase the funding ratio of the retirement plan and provide for a faster recovery of the fund status in a market downturn situation. This is in addition to the actual assumption changes I have mentioned in the last slide. CalPERS employer contribution rate are expected to increase significantly over the next few years. So which will be a major challenge on how we balance the next biennial budget of fiscal year 2019 and 2020.
So just to put it in perspective, many cities historically did not require employees to contribute. We have always required employees to contribute. In recent years, we've increased the contribution that employees are making. But even with that increase in the employee costs that they have agreed to through negotiations, it's still not going to be sufficient to cover what our escalating contribution rate is going to have to be as the employer. But we've already done, a lot of cities, at least at this point, because now they're feeling what we're feeling and have been feeling for a long time. Now they're beginning to make employees pay, and that's helping to absorb some of their costs. But we don't have that as an option unless we continue to increase the employee contribution.
This table shows the changes in the pension and fund liability for the miscellaneous and the safety plan. Total pension and fund liability increased by 43 million or 38% from 115 million in fiscal year 2015 to 158.7 million in fiscal year 2016. With all the CalPERS and Junaro assumption changes, we expect this number will be going higher when we get the next CalPERS actionary report.
So our pension liability is close to our entire budget for two years?
Yes.
Yikes. Wow, that's a little scary.
Now, we look at the Retiree Help Other Post-Employment Benefit, OPEP. As of June 30th, 2016, the OPEP unfund liability is estimated at 59.5 million. This is in addition to the pension unfund liability. On a pay-as-you-go basis, the OPEP cost has increased by 136% from 1.1 million in 2008 to 2.6 million in 2018. When you look at the bar chart on the right, the blue portion represent the general fund share of the OPEP. And the green line above represent other funds, like a sanitation fund, a water fund that represents share from the enterprise fund and other funds in the city. The current general fund budget does not address the structural deficit. On a pay-as-you-go basis, the general fund contribute around 1.9 million or 45% of the annual OPEP cost. The unfund portion of the retiree health is 2.3 million. Other structural deficit include 1.5 million in unfund operating costs and 1.2 million in deferred capital maintenance. Due to budget constraint, the city has not budgeted for any CPI increase in the operating budget since 2014.
So this is where, again, what I mentioned earlier, when we look to the future and we look at future revenue growth, with so much of the future revenue growth going to offset those PERs rate increases, the pension obligations, it still leaves very little to nothing for us to add or reduce the structural deficit. So we don't have unassigned dollars that we can look at right now and say, okay, well, we're going to start adding to our deferred maintenance. We're going to start paying more towards our unfunded operating costs and allowing the departments to add more so that they can enhance their services, their programs, or fill positions, whatever is not currently being funded. And then obviously, the most overarching expenditure that we have is the unfunded retiree obligation. So there are no discretionary funds that we can foresee are going to be applied to those things. And so that's why currently the budget can't address that structural deficit. It is built into what we keep budgeting each and every year.
But this money has to come from someplace to cover this? Or we're just putting it aside and saying we're not going to deal with it?
Well, in terms of the deferred capital maintenance and the unfunded operating costs, essentially, yes, we're not funding it. Retiree health, we have to. That is an obligation that we have to retirees. And one way or another, if it means continuing to reduce our operating expenses by cutting by cutting back in the departments as we have been doing or continuing to defer capital maintenance, it's going to have an impact. And, you know, we talked with you at the last meeting about our facilities assessment and the deferred maintenance on a lot of those facilities. So we can continue not doing anything, but the liability continues to grow. It doesn't ever, when we look at the facilities assessments and all the deferred capital maintenance that isn't being funded right now, the number is never going to get smaller. It's just going to keep getting larger.
I have a question.
Yes.
So with the structural deficit, when was, if you give me a synopsis of like timeline-wise, when did this like start or initiate?
It started with the great recession of our time. So when we had, during the recession, our revenues began to tank. We began to reduce expenditures. And ever since the recession, we have had a structural deficit that we've been dealing with because our revenues have never come back to the point where they have outpaced where we were pre-recession. And our expenses, however, continue to grow because we, the cost of doing business, which means all the materials and supplies that we have to buy, the cost of our employees, none of that can remain flat. I mean, we attempted that for quite a long time because nobody got raises. We tried to keep a lid on benefits and that kind of thing. And so we went for a period of time where there were no increases or very minimal increases to the bulk of our operating expense, which is our employees' salaries and benefits. So this has been ongoing. This has been ongoing since the recession. And there are things that are contributing to increasing some of our costs that are exacerbating the situation with a structural deficit because there are certain unfunded expenses that Lawrence pointed out earlier related to salaries and benefits increases that we didn't plan for. And so we've had to build that into the budget, and that in part is contributing to the structural deficit.
Thank you.
Now, we look at the general fund reserve. This slide shows the general fund reserve between fiscal year 2009 and 2017 and the projection for the current fiscal year 2018. The city reserve policy is to maintain general fund and aside fund balance equal to 15% of the annual budget expenditure. Project aside fund balance for the fiscal year 2018 at 17.8 million or equal to 21.8% of the general fund reserve. The fiscal year 2018 projections include 2 million one-time excess revenue, which is due to replenish the general fund reserve. The projection also include the structural deficit, and I presented in the prior slide, which is equal to around 5 million. After we take that all into consideration, the general fund reserve decreased from 22 million in fiscal year 2017 to 17.8 million in fiscal year 2018.
So the 17.8 is with all of these
Structural deficit, minus the subtract, yes.
And the 600,000 added into it.
Yes.
But remember, that's on an annual basis.
Right.
So you can continue to
Deduct those in the future.
Deduct that from the unassigned reserve, but there will come a point in the not distant future where then you will have no unassigned revenue to assign to that.
So this is
Because it doesn't go away.
A little more than two months.
Yes.
That's correct.
Of funding for the city.
That's correct, which we have a slide now that will show you that.
Oh.
Now, we look at slide number 25.
Oh yeah, there we go.
Another way to look at the performance of the general fund reserve is how many month of operating reserve we have in the bank to keep the city operate in case of any emergency or natural disaster. The GFOA recommend the general purpose government maintained at least two months of operating revenue and expenditure. The city general fund revenue spanned an average of around 6.8 million per month to pay for employee salary and benefit and other operating costs such as maintenance and surprise. For the current fiscal year 2018, the 17.8 million general fund reserve is equal to two and a half month or 75 days of operating expense. So this conclude my presentation. I'm available to answer any question that you may have.
Where is the, you said that, I thought I saw a slide saying that the ERAF funds goes back into the general fund reserve. So where would that, is that already calculated?
Yes, it is already include, when you look at the first slide, the total general fund revenue, 82.4 million, has already include the 3.5 million excess ERAF revenue.
Right.
So for a number of years now, the council, dating back several years, I can't remember exactly what fiscal year it was, made the determination that ERAF, well, we recommended that ERAF be included in the budget but be recognized as a one-time revenue because we never can be assured that that's going to continue and we can't pay operating costs for that. So then, subsequent to getting council policy that, yes, that's what we would do with ERAF, we have included it in the budget and we show you where it is as part of a revenue. So we're essentially listing it as a revenue, but we're including that as restoring the revenue that we have been drawing down from the reserves, from the general fund reserve to cover the structural deficit because we don't have, you know, the funds to cover those expenses.
So if I'm reading that right, you had anticipated getting ERAF, was it at 2.1, but we got 3.5?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we got almost a million and a half more.
Right.
Okay. And then how many years have we gotten ERAF funding?
Well, we showed you this particular chart.
Receiving the ERAF revenue since 2007. Again, the amount is pretty much tied to the asset value of the property. The higher the property value, we get more property tax than the excess ERAF will be higher. Again, it also depends on the state funding to the local school. If the state increase the funding, then that means it will be higher draw to the excess ERAF. Then we have negative less money. So there are lots of negative variable factor that will impact the annual ERAF revenue.
And in part, in large part, it's because the state's fiscal situation in recent years has been much better, certainly much better than local government. And so they have funded education. But that has resulted in our realizing an increase in this excess ERAF as well because of the strong property tax values in this particular county.
You mentioned on page 14 that there is about a 400,000 increase in service and supplies. I just wanted to know what specifically that was, if we have that.
Some of the increase is related to the professional service. The budget is around 1.2 million and then the projection is approximately 1.6 million. So it's a higher than anticipate professional service. And regarding the other expansion, like office expense, pretty much like a right on the budget target.
So it looks like the things that we have control over, we've kept control over.
We pretty much like
And the things that we did not have control over
Is the salary and benefit.
Yeah, primarily salaries and benefits.
The council had the control over that.
On the professional services, some of it, I mean, the professional services for consultants has arisen in a variety of areas. To look at issues related to our franchise contract, it's come up. We've had to use consultants regarding our water system, water rate adjustments. We've looked at a variety of consultants related to the Vista Grand. Well, those aren't general fund, those aren't all general fund.
Like the preparation of the OPEP and the pension, actual report.
Those are all general fund.
Example of the professional services.
That we've brought in. Our financial analysis that we've done with our five-year financial plan, things like that.
So just the cost of consultants increased?
Yes.
Or did we not?
The use of consultant.
The use of consultant, yeah.
And professional services as well over the last year also could include that we have done a number of recruitments because we've had staff turnover. None of the recruiter costs that we have incurred over the last couple of years, actually, we didn't anticipate. So those weren't budgeted. So we had to hire consultants to assist with that. So some of that reflects those expenses as well.
Where did, I'm sorry.
No, I think, so there was not, some of these costs weren't anticipated, you're saying, in the
Well, with recruitments, we couldn't, we didn't know.
But not with recruitments, but the other services you had here around, you said the water, the financial analysis, all of these. I was just wondering which services were, weren't anticipated.
It's mostly related to the use of a consultant to recruit for the recruitment. Those are the unanticipated.
Yeah, and we have hired recruiters several times for several key positions that we've had to fill.
Thank you.
Where did, remember when we had this, we decided on the issue of taking a million dollars and investing it in this portfolio that we had a big presentation?
PARs.
That's it. Where did that million dollars come from? Did it come from the reserves? Did it come from the general fund? Do you remember?
The 1 million that we contribute last year is based on when we close the book, we have excess revenue. Then we get the council approval to contribute 1 million. That amount will change every year. For example, if we close the book, we only have like 600,000 this year, then we won't have the money to contribute to the pass. So that means that is a variable amount that will change depend on the end closing result.
I see.
Because if I put the 1 million in the budget right now, then immediately you will see a, the first line here, you show a $400,000 deficit rather than a $600,000 excess revenue.
I have a question on page 24.
I should also mention, relative to that question about PARs, the statements that we've received over the last year from PARs indicates that our funds have generated significant interest. So it's working in our favor to have the funds in PARs.
Did we do that, was it the conservative?
Yes, we did.
Well, with the conservative, yeah.
Yes, we followed your direction that way. But it has still generated a reasonable amount of growth for us in those invested funds.
I have a question, like I said, on page 24. When you look at the top line between 6/30/16 and 6/30/17, there was a significant increase in the reserves from 17.6 to 22.2.
Yes, this is
What was the source of that money?
When we have the, when we closed the book in 2017, there was a redevelopment non-receivable that we realized. So that means even though we booked at the, as a negative, there was negative, I think it's when we closed the book in 2017, there was negative additional revenue is pretty much related to the property tax increase and the redevelopment that, around 4.6 million is not booked in the aside fund base. It was like a set aside in the another fund, not in the aside fund base. It's another category of fund balance.
So that redevelopment money was money that came back to us from the state?
It's over a period of 20 years.
It has not come back yet.
None of it has come back or a little bit?
Some of it has been received.
And so we can anticipate a little bit, but we don't know how much.
Well, the state has quite a few years to pay it back, yeah.
And so we were at the 17.6 solidly. And then due to some positive ways that the wind was blowing, we had some revenue at the end of the year there.
Yeah, lots of
That got us back up to a little bit safer revenue, but still not where we need to be.
Yes, again, it depends on the second half of the year, how well the sales tax growth. It also depend on a lot of construction and a lot of negative business activity within the city. If we see a spike in those activity, I would expect the revenue will be higher than what we budget or project here.
Thank you.
I have a general question around, I know we talked about it earlier, just around the pension funding and everything. And other jurisdictions are actually also going through the same situation. Has there been some suggestions or ways to kind of move towards a positive direction in increasing, you know, our funding? Or is there some sort of, has there been talks around how to help alleviate this? I mean, it's ongoing issue, obviously, around different municipalities. But I was just wondering around the circles that you are part of.
So actually, the League of California Cities has taken the lead in this area for several years. The City Manager's Department of the League has worked with the League of California Cities Board. We have a pension group that has devised a series of options. We have talked to CalPERS about, the League Board of Directors has endorsed the ability of cities to be able to roll back pensions. But currently, there is, in the courts, there are a couple of cases that will determine whether or not constitutionally going forward, whether or not local governments could roll back pensions for all employees. We can, we have changed, we've established here, so we've, we have changed the retirement plans for new employees coming into the city. They don't receive the same benefit level as those who have been vested in our system and are receiving the enhanced benefits that we provide to employees. So going forward, that will have an impact. But the reduction in our pension liability to a significant degree in the future will rely on all the employees who are currently in this plan leaving. And then only new employees would be here that would be at the lower pension tier. That's going to take some time. So we don't foresee that that alone is going to solve anything. What's being considered in the courts is whether or not legally cities can roll back the benefits that are provided to employees, even retirees. And if we were to do that, that could have a huge impact on reducing our costs going forward. But we don't know how that is going to turn out. The League of California Cities endorsed the right of cities to be able to make those kinds of decisions. They, in fact, I believe I sent to the council the friend of the court brief that was filed by the League of California Cities in support of the position that local entities who have those obligations should make, should be in a position to reduce benefits, particularly if it's having a significant impact like it is on us and other cities. We're not the only one in this. There are many, many cities that are in a similar condition. Some are in worse condition than we are because they're not as large as us. But the, one of the things that makes it somewhat unique for us in this pension issue the, one of the things that makes it somewhat unique for us in this pension issue is the fact that in 2002, the council at that time enhanced pension benefits for employees and that really has had the biggest impact on what we're having to pay today. Not all cities enhanced benefits for miscellaneous employees. Many of them enhanced retirement benefits at that time for police and fire, but they did not enhance it for miscellaneous employees and we did enhance it for miscellaneous employees.
And I'm not sure if you know how much that enhancement was, but it was a fifty percent increase. The pension went from two percent to three percent. So that's a fifty percent increase in retirement benefits, which has proven now to be.
And that has had a significant impact on where we are today.
If we were at two percent, we'd be a whole lot better off financially as a city.
Well, we might still be struggling, but, but it wouldn't be as bad, yeah. Because I think the, what's important, particularly on this chart, this, this shows you that, you know, over time, that the, the red line, which is public safety, is increasing about twenty-three percent. Miscellaneous down below the blue line is, is increasing by about fifteen percent. We don't project that our revenues are going to increase by that amount over that period of time. And so again, when our obligations are outpacing the revenue that we project, that we will be receiving during that same period, it further exacerbates the existing structural deficit that we have right now. It doesn't go away. So the end result, and we'll have that conversation when we come back and do the, the budget study review with you on the proposed budget. The impact of that is that we have to reduce our operating costs that allows the revenue that we're bringing in to then pay for these costs, our OPEB costs long-term. And then what remains is what we can afford to pay towards operating expenses, which is the cost of running government here. And that very much limits us, which is why we are still in the mode of continuing to look for every single thing that we can reduce in terms of our operating expenses in each of the operating departments in the general funding.
Well, Elise, thank you. There is an increase that we're seeing in our property tax. So are there any other questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. We'll start off at page six. Sales tax revenue, item number two. Fiscal year budget was twelve million, projection is twelve million. And according to the statement that I heard, there has been zero percent growth from the prior year. I find that hard to believe with all the new businesses that we have, especially in ceremony and it's come to fruition. And I don't know, can we explain this, that we, we don't see any growth?
Yes. So council member, we, we can project that over time going forward, that we will realize the benefit of that sales tax. Unfortunately, a lot of the new development you're talking about just occurred within the last year. And so at this point in time, we have not seen significant revenue growth because they haven't had enough operating, you know, experience at the mall now. That warranted, you know, us reflecting much higher sales tax. By next year, when you get your sales tax receipts at the end of the year and when you know how that growth has been affected, then the projections may be different.
All right, sorry. Are you getting any feedback as to how it's going in terms of?
Every time I drive over there, Vice Mayor, it's always busy, it looks like. There's a lot of cars.
Yeah, that's right, especially.
And lots of people, when I walk through the mall, there's a lot of people now. But realistically, I mean, I would hope all those people are spending lots of their discretionary dollars, but simply because people are there and walking around doesn't necessarily mean they are spending a lot of money. So, you know, we can't just look at it that way, but it looks like it's vibrant, it's busy, people are there, you know, and I hope that over time, over the next year, that that translates into, you know, revenue growth that you will see going forward. But, but right now, it's just too soon for us to, to be able to estimate that.
And isn't there always a year delay anyway? We get our, we get paid at the end of the year, so it's always a year behind.
Right.
Continuing on page six, item number ten, program fees. We don't see an increase coming from program fees that we are charging. I do recall something on the agenda that we have items coming up to increase fees for the use of particular properties here within Daly City that does come under that category?
You are absolutely correct and that is going forward. Again, we will receive revenue going forward because the increases were just approved and we'll realize those increases next year.
Thank you.
And for the program fee, item number ten, program fee, those are mostly related to the library and recreation programs?
So where would recreation, the renting and the use of the particular halls, the use of the, the, that come with the rents?
Yes, that is, but just in item number seven, rent and interest income, yeah.
All right. Moving on to page fifteen, with your charts there, is there any way, I mean, this looks like the standard as to how much Daly City puts out for every tax dollar we receive as to what percentages go to wherever. Is there any way to get a comparison? Do other cities pay the same?
Do they pay the same for what? I'm sorry.
Percentages. I, I see utility users tax seven point four percent of every dollar, sales tax fourteen point six of every dollar. I mean, this only represents Daly City.
This is only Daly City?
Slide, I'm sorry.
What? I was on the wrong page, I think.
And you know what? And I was looking at the wrong page.
Okay, so.
Okay, slide number fifteen, I'm sorry.
Number fifteen is our expenditures by category. So that shows you of all of our general fund expenditures.
Right.
How they're allocated across the various departments.
Okay, any idea that we can give the comparison with other cities and how they do it, if the percentages are the same?
So usually for a general fund government with police and fire, public safety, the average is around between seventy to seventy-five percent. This is the norm for most of the city in the San Mateo County, but that ratio may change slightly.
All right, well, I mean, you know.
I think it would look very different, council member, depending upon the financial condition of, of those cities.
I definitely agree.
So if they have a lot more money, they are going to probably be allocating, for example, more towards capital outlay than we can afford to do. We deferred a lot of things, so I don't think we could do an apples-to-apple comparison.
I, well, I just think a nice to know as a need to know. All right, thank you.
I think the more challenged a city is, the higher the percentage is in salaries, benefits and retirement. Because the other stuff has all been cut back, like services and stuff.
Well, and especially because, you know, the majority of our general fund budget, okay, goes into the expenses related to our workforce, our employees. They are the largest cost center of our general fund budget because they're the people that we're paying to do the work across all those different departments. The, the costs for things like materials and supplies across the city in total, as you can see, it's, you know, it's about ten percent, but it's de minimis compared to what the cost of our employees, their, their salaries at forty-seven percent, their benefits at twelve percent and their retirement at sixteen percent. All of those are much more significant cost centers than materials and supplies that they require to do their jobs.
Enterprise funds. Does this budget contain any enterprise?
This is the general fund.
Right.
Review. The enterprise fund, we will do, we will be providing you going forward with some information as we do the budget process about the enterprise, but those are restricted funds.
I, I understand, Ms. Martel.
So we don't, at mid-year, we don't really spend a lot of time on that because that's not discretionary funding that we, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to be sure because a question came up on consultant costs and we're talking about the watershed, Muscle Rock. I just wanted to be sure that we aren't taking any funds from the general fund when it should come out of enterprise funds.
Those enterprise funds are being used, yes.
Okay, thank you. Redevelopment agency and the return of funds. I think Daly City was due to get close to eighteen to twenty million, but it's over a period of time?
Yes, it will be, projection is around a period of around twenty years.
Twenty years? So if the state pays us back, we can anticipate at least a million dollars a year?
It will be approximately around a contract to, to less than one million a year. Again, it all depends on the property value going forward on those negative redevelopment property.
Thank you. And one last question that I have, I think, Ms. Martel, you kind of alluded to it moving forward in regards to pensions. Creating different tier levels for the new employees, not to put us in a bind because we are definitely in a bind and I think the.
Well, the state, the state mandated, their, your state law changed the pension benefits for public employees going forward. So under PEPRA, the, the age that one becomes eligible to retire was increased.
Right.
And then it also limited the retirement benefits that could be paid under any particular plan going forward. So all of our employees are subject to that. Now, the caveat to that is if someone is a PERS Classic member, which means if they come from another agency, they have been vested in CalPERS at that agency. When they come here to work with us, if it, if it's less than six months that they have moved from a CalPERS agency to our agency, then they're considered a Classic member and then they get the benefits that are being paid to our Classic members. So we don't have any control over that. It's only if it's been more than six months since they left that other CalPERS agency or if they are a brand-new employee in the system, then they start out at the lower tier benefit.
Crystal, thank you very much.
Welcome.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Any more questions?
So.
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
No. Okay. So all of this information is, again, as we stated initially, was to give you a snapshot of where we are now or at mid-year and where we project we're going to be at June thirtieth. The next series of study sessions that we'll be having in April is relying on a lot of this information for the projections that we have included in the budget going forward. So that's why it was really important that you understand where we are with this and ask your questions now because if there's any issues with, with what you've seen today and you need more information in advance of the, of the budget study sessions, then we'll be glad to get that for you because this really is sort of the foundation for going forward on the budget.
Thank you very much. And there's no miscellaneous items?
No, there are no miscellaneous items.
Okay. And so I think, thank you, everyone. Now adjourned this meeting.